Showing the kind of Breton people that come to the park and use the country park. Someone from Timoth, one from Dawlish, one from Starcross. Yeah, two from Timoth, one from Starcross and one from Dawlish. So all with comments as mentioned, but also I think worried that there were no toilets. So obviously, you know, and also the fact that it's the positioning of it. Some people aren't happy with, not comfortable with it being so close to the ancient gate to the park and opposite a disabled parking space as well. councillor Heath, you've got, you raised your hand to speak, please go ahead.
Right, thank you. I'm pleased for a little bit explanation which helps. Before I make any other comments, does councillor Martin Wrigley know whether they hope to break even? I assume it's obviously going to be a rent for Teambridge. And that rent obviously will be paid whether the kiosk makes money or not. Is that first of all correct?
That is, I believe, the arrangement, yes.
Right, okay. So to some extent, Teambridge, I wouldn't say washing their hands of it, but by any means, of course. I don't mean it that way, but they may not necessarily have day to day oversight. So picking up on a few of the other comments. I'm not sure creeping commercialisation to a natural park is necessarily a good way to go. I can see they can get some money from it. I'm glad that you've put in the thing about no plastic cups. So that is very important, but like some of the letters, I am concerned that, I wish people were clean and tidy, but you know, there's two types of people on planet earth. Ones that care and ones that don't seem to care. And there's a big vast gap between the two. So I can see more litter and we were thinking about it's a wildlife park as well. And obviously even paper and cardboard and waxed paper does not do as more animals any good if they ingest it. So if we are to say yes to it and Teambridge give it a final go ahead, what can we put in place other than saying to, obviously them, they can't have plastic, that the litter must be considered far higher than normal. For example, there needs to be definitely a litter bin by the side of the place, which I don't know who will empty, whether it be them or Teambridge. That needs to be sorted out if it hasn't already been sorted out. Martin might be able to tell me that one. But people will wander off with a plastic, sorry, cardboard cup and drop it somewhere. Because it's, it's not going to be a china cup they drink there. I would say straight away, if it was a china cup and there was a table and chairs there, which does seem to be increasing stuff, and they drunk it and gave it back, I would have no objections at all. But I'm concerned with more takeaway rubbish, more takeaway rubbish in a park. So at the moment, you need to convince me it's a good idea. That's all I've got to say for the moment, but I'd love to hear what others have got to say.
Okay, thank you councillor Heath. councillor Morehead, you've indicated you'd like to speak, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate what councillor Heath is talking about. Obviously, there would need to be a necessity for the outlet itself to have bins available. There are already little seating areas with potential barbecue sites for people. So it's likely they would take something to drink there. I think since we don't know how, how much the capacity of the car park is used, and until this happens, we don't know how much of a problem litter is going to be. And since there is a time limit on it, I think as far as I'm concerned, it would be suck it and see. And at the end of this trial period, then it'll be up to Teambridge and no doubt we and other people would have an input into it as to what's happened in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. As I understand from the details that we have online for it, it is a trial period for a year. So it's, it is absolutely a trial to see how this goes. And it is noted that no seating will be provided, but there will be bins and recycling areas required. And that's stated within, in the details of it as well, just, just for information. Did any other members want to say anything on this one at all? councillor Martin Wrigley, oh sorry, Martin Heath, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, just come back very quickly on the litter side of it.
Sorry, sorry Martin, I was just lowering your hand and I've muted you, apologies.
Okay, so I don't want, doesn't tend to stare at the little red spot. Yeah, as you know, across the region and the country, but the region have been talking about litter on the beaches and everything. It is a major problem and any site that has cafes is obviously going to increase it, whatever we think. So if we are to go ahead with it on this trial basis, it could be put a request in saying that the cafe, shall we call it, or the, I'm not quite sure what you're calling it, cabin or whatever.
Concession is really all we can say, I guess, until we know who's actually taking the.
Right, the outlet, let's, let's call it the outlet, will have a, perhaps a specially designed board, nicely done, pinned to its front saying, please be aware of wildlife, do not drop litter, use our bins or something like that. Don't just leave it to people, they're, oh, they're all right, they're not all right. Most people are all right, but they're a large minority that just, I'm going to be honest, dirty. They just drop it anywhere, they don't, don't care at all. Well, I think it's time that we really spoke clearly about this issue. It's not going away, keep written tidy, worked on it for what, 50 years? It's got worse, it doesn't work, it's because we're too lax in this country. We don't really care that much. So if we're going to start something new, let's start with a really good system of being, making people understand that yes, it is a concession for them to drink it there, but please be careful. Would that be possible somehow or other to work and our agreement, should we agree? That type of thing, there must be some special notice for this.
I would, I would think a suggestion or, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't make it enforceable, but we can make it a strong recommendation that this is, that this is, that kind of statement is made for whoever takes the concession on and to use that as, as part of their, you know, promotion. And the fact that there's got to be bins and recycling areas. Okay, I've got some other people who want to speak as well, so they might have some points about this too. councillor Heath, if that's all right. I'll take councillor Wrigley first and then councillor Morehead, please, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I mean, yes, I take the points on litter very seriously as well and agree with that. I think certainly asking for signage on the, on the concession itself. But also I think we can ask Teambridge to ask the wardens who are often in the park looking around things to also keep an eye out for any increase in litter. And should that happen, then to take appropriate steps to, to prevent it and require the person who takes the concession to actually deal with this and clear it up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Actually councillor Wrigley has just checked, mentioned something. I was going to say two things. Firstly, there is a big information board produced by Teambridge. I cannot remember exactly what's on there, but there is quite likely to be a reference to litter. But that could, but we could ask that Teambridge include that in this information board. And I agree with councillor Wrigley that the wardens play a very important part there. And my point would be that at the, or towards the end of this trial period, they are going to be the key players here because they are going to have seen what litter arrives around the area itself and particularly in the car park. I would think that a lot of people just buy a drink and sit in the car with it. That doesn't mean to say they won't just drop it outside the car. But I think that the, the actual wardens are going to be the key players. Thank you.
Thank you for that, I think that's an important point. Okay, I think I've got councillor Tamlin with a hand raised and a blue hand from councillor Martin Heath. I'll, I'll come to you Martin, second if that's okay, as you've already spoken twice. councillor Tamlin, carry on please.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to ask, is it just drinks or is there food involved as well? Does anyone know?
We don't know who the concession is. As I understand it, it's, it's, it's drinks. I know if they're thinking in terms of the concession that's in Starcross, that's got cakes and biscuits and that's it. There isn't like sandwiches or anything, it's just like, light snacks. But as far as I know, it's drinks, but I guess, you know, concessions are concession. Okay councillor Heath.
Yeah, right. I should think also it would be food because they wouldn't make enough profit with drinks, but that's just my, my thought on that one. Right, would it be possible when doing the legal documents for this project, that they do actually write into it that if the litter is found to be significant, or whatever that might mean, I know it's a bit grey, but you can't do it in weight, significantly increased due to what we suspect is the kiosk and the type of stuff that's dropped, that Teambridge could cancel the agreement with them legally within, say, 28 days' notice. So that would really put on notice that that kiosk needs to make sure as well, working with the parkkeepers etcetera, that it is there. Because if we've given them a year, a year's a long time, a lot of damage. If it did get out of hand and there's lots of people coming from Exeter, as they do, and they come and party there and stuff, it's starting to get bad and we've got no legal way, we said, oh, they've got a year, we can't do anything. That wouldn't be good. So would that be possible to actually add that in if there was seem to be significant damage, barbecue fires or anything, that could be cancelled at short notice with no penalty to Teambridge?
I think barbecues and fires would be taking it out of the remit of the concession stand councillor Heath. No disrespect to you, but I think it would be, it would need to be things like litter and associated. And it's mainly going to, that kind of thing to do with that. But I think we can, we can make that as a really strong recommendation from us. Should the, I mean, we haven't had any suggestions that we want to take this forward. But I, I think as it is a trial, it's, I think members, I'm just getting, taking a pulse here, you can, you can say no. I'm getting the idea that members are happy to actually suggest that we do a trial, but maybe with your suggestion councillor Heath, that they'd be even more happy from the point of view of that strong suggestion that should trouble happen, there'd be a case of shortly in the least to give notice of 28 days. I'm not sure if that's a, something that is standard with Teambridge, but we could at least say a shortened, a shortened lease if, should there be trouble. Because it is a, you know, it's a special area, it's a conservation area as well.
It's a trial.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, are you, on that basis, and I don't know if anyone else wants to speak at the moment, councillor Morehead? No, okay. I was just going to say on that basis, I'm happy to propose from the Chair that we do accept it as, as is. But with that concession that, very strong recommendation that we have concerns about the litter and problems and actually litter and pollution of the country park, we would make the strong suggestion as the local town council that we wish Teambridge to consider monitoring this at regular periods through the, the tenancy of the concession. And that they do, if there are problems building up, they do ask to shorten the lease to 28 days. I'm sure the wording can be worked between myself, but it's, I'm just kind of throwing that, that into the mix. And please, if anyone wants to add something, take something away from that, please do raise your hand and, and make a comment. And Yola, you've got the great job of reading that back roughly to us, if that's all right.
Let me just unmute, okay. So I'd already put about the, the signage, appropriate signage for the concession. Wardens to monitor any increase in litter and address any issues with the concession. And then what you have just said, the strong recommendation, we've got concerns about the litter and pollution, a strong suggestion that you have the option to shorten the lease to 28 days, should there be an issue. But again, it's all that it's here and I can go back to the recording as well. But I think you paraphrased pretty much what was said before.
Okay, so, okay, so I've, I've made that proposal, so we'll, we'll take a vote on that and we'll see where we go from there. So members, if you'd like to vote, if you approve that proposal. So that's three, anyone would like to vote against that proposal? And anyone would like to abstain on that proposal? So that is carried with three members. Obviously councillor Wrigley's already declared an interest on that. So we will move on to the next item, if that's all right, thank you members. So we're going on to 2001 449. And this is a certificate of lawfulness for Lammers Park House. It's for them to continue with use of the land and garden that is associated with the, the house on Three Priory Road. I don't know if members are familiar with where this is. But we'll just have a look through these, these plans. We're talking about the piece of land there that's across the road from, from Lammers Park House. So the white building there is the building and that's, some of those photos give a really good idea of, of what we're talking about. Okay, so we've had a look through there, has anyone got any, any points or anything they would like to, to say about this item? Yola, if we can come back to, to members please. councillor Gary Taylor. If you'd like to unmute yourself Gary.
Thank you Chair, if we could please, if I could please ask our clerk Yola if she would put the slide up with the red and blue hatching? Which?
I think that was the site, like, site location, I think.
Yes, I think, I think you're, you're right Chair, I think it was the site location plan.
There we go. There we go.
Take that the other way. Yes, so one of the slides showed the parking and the garden combined. Whereas it was by recollection that there was a section of garden and separately parking. Certainly I wouldn't want to see the, the area for parking reduced. I think it's very important that we have parking, even if it is only for Lammers Park House itself, which has, has been used as a bed and breakfast, I'm not sure whether it is at the moment. But whether it's a private house or whether it continues to be a, a bed and breakfast, the, the parking that is provided there is, is very important, is a very important facility. So I would have no objection though to the garden being adopted, as it were, into the, into the garden area of Lammers Park House.
Okay, thank you. Is that a proposal from you councillor Taylor, can I have your present to ask that?
I would, I would, I would propose no objection on that basis.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from other members at all on this one? councillor Heath.
It's more of a question really, yeah, we don't know if it's bed and breakfast, it's not, it's not a residential home, is it?
No.
No, I didn't think it was, right. Because there is one next to it, isn't there, that's the big one, I think at the end. So yeah, I, I go along the parking business, you can't really park in that road. So if that disappears, there's, there's problems. So if we are to say okay, then that must definitely be included. The, the, the garden across the road, which is what we're asking about, I mean, I assume it belongs to them. A little bit puzzled why they need permission to use it if it's their land. So what's the legal thing here, I don't quite follow this one.
I think if I can come in there, I think from, as I understand it, it's a, there are lots of properties in Dawlish that, that suffer from this. And it's about the land registry and whether parts, parcels of land are actually registered directly with it. And I think they've, they have submitted a, a signed affidavit, as it were, of their indication that's what they believed it was when they bought the property. And there are advertisements of the house with its garden and it's another linked property. So, and that garden and the parcel of land that's being used for parking that are associated with it. So this is, I suppose, in planning terms, this is a rubber stamp of saying yes, that we are comfortable, this is the case. councillor Heath, yeah, okay.
In that case there, there's legal implications there. I wouldn't want myself, I don't know about others, to be putting a rubber stamp on a legal, saying yes, now the planning department has agreed it belongs to them, without studying the legal document. So it sounds as if I'm going to abstain because I don't know how on earth tonight we will be able to qualify that legally.
I think, I think councillor Heath, if I may, I mean, this will, this will be going to Teambridge to, to, to look at this and into the legal implications. We're in an opportunity to actually say that we perhaps object to this more than saying that we agree with it. It's, it's about us, this is our opportunity to say how we feel as people who, who live and are councillors in this area and know the area specifically. So I don't, I, I don't think it's, we're not asked to kind of put on our barrister robes for, for this particular item at this stage. Okay. I've got councillor Morehead who wants to speak and then councillor Wrigley, go ahead councillor Morehead, please.
This application is purely to do with the garden area, which is hatched in red. And as far as I understand it, and I looked at this when it was on the Teambridge website previously, it's long been in use as a garden. There is no change to the parking or the garden area. It is basically what with a house, you'd call a certificate of lawfulness. It's just saying, okay, you've done that for 15 years, fine, go ahead. And as far as I'm concerned, that's all it is and I'm happy to accept it.
Okay, are you happy to second the proposal we have on the table at the moment in that instance?
Yes, I would be.
Okay, thank you councillor Morehead. councillor Wrigley, please go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarity, I was going to, councillor Morehead's just said a lot of what I was going to say. It is just a certificate of lawfulness to acknowledge what is being already used and there is no proposed change that I can see of garden and parking. So I don't think that, that's relevant. Similarly, asking for planning permission is completely and entirely unrelated to ownership. You could, if you wish to, ask for planning permission to build a house in your neighbour's garden. Nothing's saying you own that garden, but you can ask for that planning permission. So that permission has no implication whatsoever on, on the ownership or any legalities otherwise. It is just in terms of planning law and that's all it looks at, it doesn't look at anything else. So any other considerations are entirely down to other people. And we are just asked to comment on whether we consider that that piece of garden that has been used as garden for a while should now be legally classified as garden and therefore have any rights and inclusions that would be granted upon it therefore.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. councillor Yola, please go ahead.
Just before you move to vote, I did notice councillor Tamlin had her hand up quite a few times, but I think we all missed her.
Sorry councillor Tamlin, I've been looking for blue hands and I've obviously been covering you up, I do apologise, sorry. Please go ahead.
Chair, I think councillor Morgan and councillor Wrigley have actually said what I was going to say anyway. I understand that they're saying that legally they've had ownership for 10 years and more and that is a criteria. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, we have a proposal to accept as is, with no objections. And this has been seconded by councillor Morehead and proposed by councillor Taylor. So we'll go to the vote. If you are happy to accept that, please raise your hands. Yeah, it's unanimous, thanks everybody. We'll go on to the, the next item now, thank you Yola. And this is 55 Timoth Road, a two storey side extension, new external stairs to existing balcony and new roof covering at 55 Timoth Road. So this is quite a large property that's set down, as I recall from seeing the plans. And it's on the cliffside, as you can see from, unfortunately the plan and the maps on the same illustration, but we can just about see. Okay. councillor Morehead, you have your blue hand up, have you got a question while we're, we're looking through this at the moment?
Yes, I, I'm, I can see that it's well back from the cliff edge. And I was just wondering if we have any objections from any neighbours?
No, there are, there are no objections by any neighbours, I wondered that as well. I think it is quite sunk down from the road. It's one of those properties that you almost just see the roof as you drive past on the road. And it's, it is quite low down, I think it's the one that's, has been a little bit overgrown for a while. And this there, they're obviously going to make some great improvements on, on, from that point of view. And I believe as well that there's been no, there's no indication of any trees to be removed or any screening at all. This is all about the house. So I don't think the road, the view from the road, I don't think will be affected that much, as I understand it. Is everyone happy that they've, they've seen enough of the plans? I'm, hopefully you've, you've had a look online anyway, but councillor Taylor? Please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I, I agree, this is, I do believe this is a house that's currently rather ungrown. Would appear, if you all could please put the plans existing in for us. It is the, very small writing, isn't it?
It is, I know, it's really difficult. Actually seeing the positioning of the map's quite difficult as well, but I do, yeah, I know, I recognise the one it is, it's quite.
So.
Those, that, that real houses are quite low, aren't they?
Yes, I did have, I had a feeling that there was a garage to the side of it. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure now.
There is on the plan, there is on the plan, but I can't see it indicated. Maybe we'll have a look at the, maybe that's what they're doing, they're incorporating the garage into the new plan, can we see the proposed?
So, so that's, that's the proposed. It's, it's a bit nondescript from the, from the front, from the back, though it's, 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 we have spectacular views across the bay.
Absolutely.
A very, very desirable house. Probably they don't have many windows, as you might expect, to the front because it's buried, to an extent it's, it's down into the ground.
Yes.
And it's a busy road as well, so it's all about the back. There's adequate parking to, on the, in the driveway, as I recall.
There's a flat area before the building, yeah.
So, so I would, if there are no objections from any neighbours. And of course, the, the owner I would trust has made all the necessary inquiries as to whether the house is going to still be standing in 50 or 100 years' time. I would have, I would have no objection to these plans themselves.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Martin Heath, I see you've been very patient while councillor Taylor's been speaking. If you'd like to go ahead and speak as well, please.
Very briefly, it is in my area, but I've got no objections to it. And just like the last speaker, probably within 100 or so feet of the cliffs, I do find it strange they want to spend X number of thousand pounds. But especially after the report this week of the South Pole is now melting faster than ever and the seas will be rising and cliffs will be falling again, that's the reality. But when we was investigating something else a couple of years back, governments clearly said they have no proposals to stop anyone building on cliffs. Madness, but there you go.
Thank you, but on that basis, on that basis, you have no objections to, to, to the proposal. Thank you councillor Heath, thank you. Did anyone else have anything they wanted to, to say about this item in front of us? No, I'm just seeing lots of smiley faces. councillor Morehead? Please go ahead.
I would just, thank you Chair, I would just like to propose that we have no objections.
Thank you, is anyone happy to second that proposal? councillor Tamlin, thank you. So we have a proposal to accept with no objections and a seconded, so let's vote on that, please. Acceptance of the item with no objections, thank you. Thanks very much, that's passed unanimously. And let's move on to the next item, please. Yola, this is 2001 36 and this is 140. Yolla, this is 200136 and this is 147 Exeter Road Dawlish. This is the part of Exeter Road opposite the, what I know is the campsite, as you, as you just kind of go around the corner, you've got a view of the trees and, and what have you. There it is. And this is a single-storey side and rear extension and a new outbuilding. Again, we've got, I'm afraid councillor Taylor, we've got very small plans all in one go, but at least we have got them together, as it were. And we have quite a few photographs to have a look at, which are quite useful, I think, to see what's there at the moment. Okay, so this property backs on to, like it's Lower Drive. So the houses you just saw there, a view from the back with the properties at Lower Drive. And that's a view from the front door, as it were. Okay. I've one more look. Can we pause on this one a moment? Yolla, just, there's a lot to take in on this one. Councillor Morehead, you have your hand raised if you'd like to, to speak. Carry on.
I have spent quite a lot of time looking at this one and this is an observation really. And that is that if you look at the original block plan, the existing, you'll find that the garage is set well back. And if you look at the actual ground plan, you'll see why. Because the car, the house itself is not parallel to the boundary. So they couldn't have built a garage up to the front of the house. It wouldn't have fitted.
Yeah.
So I see that in this one, it talks about the kitchen extension, but having an open plan, otherwise what we would have called a carport, an open car parking space. And I, I certainly hope that that will be adequate because more and more people these days are parking on the grass sward outside, which is not a parking space. But it was just that I, I spent ages looking at that, I very nearly bought a house with that problem years ago and then realised we couldn't get the car down the side of the house to get to the garage. But I don't think it's that bad here. But it's just an observation. But it, they're talking about an open parking space, so I would assume that they've thought about that and that, and without it being as substantial with doors and so forth, it's possible to park there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Martin Heath, if you'd like to go ahead, please.
Yeah, just go along with the last speaker, I agree on that. And it might be worthwhile thinking about this for future things. I know it's not this one, but it seems more and more now that builders and contractors, when they're building new houses and estates, they actually put in a garage, which then counts as part of the house parking. But it's a little trick, because many of the garages they're putting in are not big enough for cars. So like the, the discussion on this one, you can't get the car in there, but it counts as two cars spaces, one for a garage, one on the drive. The fact is that no one puts, I could show you a road near me, where no one's got their house in a garage because they can't get it in there. They're not wise enough. So we need to be a bit smarter than some of these planners these days, I think, and we're a smart lot, to make sure we don't fall for that one. But I don't think that is one of them here. I just thought it would be an observation.
Okay. Thank you councillor Heath. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Interestingly, the proposal does show a car parked in a garage alongside the house.
On one of the photographs?
Not on the photograph, no.
Oh, you mean on the plan?
The plan view at the bottom of this page that we're looking at now as proposed, it shows, it does, it does show a car in, in, in the garage. So quite how they get out, I'm not sure. I got it once and I tried parking my car in it, I had to get out through the hatch at the back, it was so small. So it might be, so I guess you could say the same about the driveway as was. It, it is very narrow. It's more likely that the car, that, that, that the garage will be used for bikes, motorbike maybe, and the car will sit, will sit in, will sit in front. But in terms of the, the, the rest of the works of the house, I think the extension to the side and rear looked very attractive from the garden. I'm pleased to see that the original features from the front, which are quite, quite interesting, are all retained. I have no objection.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yolla, can we, thank you, you read my mind. Thanks very much. The only thing I noted when I was looking through this one is the fact that there's a note and a letter about sewer, because as it happens, you probably saw it on some of the photographs, there's the, the main sewer passes under the driveway of this property. Not that they're actually planning on building on it, but it is something to, to be noted, but they would have to be in consultation with South West Water with whatever they did. Should that be the case? That isn't something that we'd need to concern ourselves with, with the voting. Unfortunately, that is something, unfortunately, that the, the property owner will possibly have to, to do. So generally, I'm getting the feel that, I'm, 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 sorry to ask if anyone else wants to speak, I'm getting the feel that you're, you're comfortable with this. Councillor Heath, did you want to come back?
Yeah, just following up with what you just said, looking at that South West Water on my other computer, I think it's only 150mm sewer, which is only six inches. It's not a, it's not a main road.
It's not the main one.
Giant's one, so that's pretty normal for a house to have to deal with.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm getting the impression, as I said, that there doesn't seem to be any problems with, with this item. Are members happy for me to propose from the chair that we accept this as, with no objections and, and move on to the next item? If that's the case, I'm happy to propose that. If you'd like to vote on that, please. Thank you. So that one is passed with no objections. We now go to Leyfield Walk, 2001497. This is a single-storey side extension. We did have one from Leyfield Walk a few, a month or two ago, maybe a month ago. This is a different property at a different part of Leyfield Walk and they are taking advantage of a corner plot from, as I understand it, when I had a look at it earlier. Okay. So this is the other end of Leyfield Park, where I think in the block plan, it might, but it's where it joins Gate House, Gate House Drive. Councillor Morehead, you have your blue hand raised if you'd like to, to speak up.
Thank you Chair. Yes, we, we've had two other applications recently in Leyfield Walk, one in a very constrained place, one which was more reasonable. And this one, to my mind, and again, I've spent a lot of time looking at it, I'm sure others have, it is a large plot. It seems to be on the side, which is not directly overlooking anyone. We can't see what's across the road, but if it's across the road, it's not too close. So personally, I don't think, I, I couldn't see that we could object to it on any planning grounds.
No? Okay. Thank you. I tend to agree with you councillor Morehead, the, it seems quite a, a common sense extension, bearing, bearing in mind the property in the plot, taking advantage of that space and they are just doing a single-storey extension from that point of view. There are no local objections as well. There's no neighbours who have a problem with this. Because as, as councillor Morehead has already said, it's, it's not facing or imposing on any of the neighbours at all. Okay. I think we've had a, a good look at this. Members, are you happy to come back to discussion and see if anyone has anything, any points or any thoughts that they'd like to share? No, everyone seems very happy from that point of view. There's no dissenting voices, which is what I like to hear. Councillor Gary Taylor, let's see where, which way you're going to take this.
So I, I wasn't sure whether councillor Morehead's, the councillor Morehead, that made a proposal for, for no objection on this. If, if, if she did, then I'd be happy to second her. I think it's a very, a very good extension. It's well proportioned, it's got roof lights, it's got views of the garden. It does have glazing to the front as well, but that seems quite well screened. So I don't think it's going to have any impact at all on, on neighbours opposite. And so I'd be happy to second.
Councillor Morehead, were you happy to propose on the, on the basis of what you've already said?
I would be happy to make that a proposal, that we have no objections. As a sort of side issue, bearing in mind the forthcoming planning regulations and legislation, it occurs to me that when people, and I know we can't make it part of this, but it's just an observation, that when a side extension, a single-storey extension is being built in future, there might need to be a requirement for the foundations to be sufficiently strong to support another story or even two. But I won't go into that now, as far as this one's concerned. As far as this is concerned, I don't see that we have any grounds for objections.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have a, a seconder from councillor Taylor, so let's go to the vote, please. Raise your hand if you're happy to accept this proposal. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, so that's carried. We'll move on to Honeysuckle Drive. This is a property on the new part of the estate, 6 Honeysuckle Drive. This is the, the estate that's to the rear of the big Gerald shop, as I know it, at the near gatehouse. And what they're doing is loft conversion with front dormers and rear roof lights. So those are the dormers. Quite large dormers actually, but. So everyone know where this is. It's, it's quite, there's quite a windy road with Honeysuckle Drive and it's, it's almost in a cul-de-sac. So it overlooks the, the back of another house, as I understand it. So there isn't, it actually isn't overlooking the front of another property, which might maybe explains why there's been absolutely no issues with objections to this, because those front dormers won't be overlooking or overlook. Okay. Thank you, Yolla. Through that, you're getting, you're getting to know my pattern of chairing, I understand, when we have looked through. Okay. Anyone got any comments at all about this or any thoughts that they would like to share with us? No? Councillor Taylor? You're muted.
Yeah. Could Yolla please show us the, the, the map view of the, I, I just wanted to have a look at the orientation.
Okay. I think, I think it's the side of the property.
The larger, the larger scale orientation. So the site location plan.
Okay. Oh. So it's overlooking the, the side of another property, I think, isn't it? That faces out onto the, the Little Lane.
It, it looks like it is, it looks like it does face a house on the other side of the road. I can understand why they would, a bit slightly confusing, because I'm sure they've got the front of the house showing us the west elevation, well, as you can see from where the north is pointing on there, on here, it's more, it's more really a south elevation. The west elevation would be the side of the house. Unless I've got, unless I've got the, unless I've got the orientation of this house the wrong way around. Perhaps I have. Perhaps, perhaps this house looks west towards the fields then.
Let's have a look at the, can we have a look at the plan, just to clarify that? Thank you. I would say it does face the field, actually, yes. Because if you look at the, the shape of that.
So yes, the garage then is the, is a, so it's a double, it's, there are two garages next to each other and the driveway.
That's right.
So the, the house, although it fronts Honeysuckle Drive, is actually to the, it's, it's got its side to Honeysuckle Drive.
That's right.
Would that be right? And then, and then the garage is accessed from the west side? So does it share a driveway with number eight? Is that how it works?
Let's have another look, let's have another look at the.
Oh, go back one please.
Because it's got east and north, so that's not there, that's.
So there's the garage. And yes, and the way that the garage is orientated.
Yeah, it does.
You couldn't get a car in the other way around. So the driveway must, must come from the bottom of the page here, as we're, as we're looking at it. And that is, that is the front then, facing west.
Chair, if I may, I'm just looking at the satellite picture and you can see.
Well done, thank you.
You can see that there is, the, the end of Honeysuckle Drive has got a sort of a square blocked off ending. I think you called it that a hammerhead. And then that continues on to a private piece of tarmac, which then gives access to both garages for both houses. So there's tarmac in front of the house. So the house is looking into what is on my satellite picture here, a field.
That's right.
The dormers will overlook a field and no other houses. And councillor Taylor was absolutely right, the side of the house is on Honeysuckle Drive.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's how I took it from how it was worded on the, on there, but it, actually seeing the shape of it on the plan, I was, I was starting to, I was starting to doubt myself, but never mind. Okay. Is there anyone else who wants, councillor Heath?
Just a quick question from the drawings there. I was looking at it, I couldn't find it. Are they saying they want this for bedrooms? Do they say what they want the, the loft space for?
Yep, they're creating two bedrooms and I think at least either a bathroom or toilet up there and obviously extending the stair up to there. Hence why back there are lights and they've got velux windows and in the front they've got the dormers. So the, the dormers are so they can fit the bedrooms in.
Yeah. Obviously the building regulations will be done on those things, so that's fine. But yeah, I've got no objection on that.
Okay. Are you happy to propose on that basis councillor Heath, as you've, as you've mentioned that, I will suggest that if you would like to.
Why not? On those conditions?
Okay. Councillor Wrigley, you've got your hand up.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a proposal and a seconder, so we'll take that to a vote. And based now we've clarified where the position is, I think we're all, I think we're all comfortable. So let's vote to accept. Thank you. That's passed as it is. Thank you, Yolla. The next one, I'm not sure how much information you're going to share with us really, Yolla, but this is the 2001534 and it's a TPO, a crown with use of one sycamore to three metres. I had quite a bit of difficulty trying to actually find where this was, but I see councillor Morehead, you have your hand up. If you'd like to, to speak, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I quite recently, not connected with this application, but quite recently reminded Timbridge of their own tree preservation order, block one, which follows the line of the brook and includes a newy field. I am concerned that the applicant wants to reduce this to three metres. And obviously, from reading the paperwork, Mr Waddams thought they meant reducing it by three metres. If they reduce it to three metres, they're making it into a shrub. But I, as we often do, I would propose, if I may, that we leave this to the discretion of Mark Waddams, because he is the expert in this.
Absolutely. And as you know, that, that's normally where we go with these, I must admit, because I think it's whether we, we see there's any objections or any, any comments, and there are no further comments finding one nearby. So I'm happy to. and there are no further comments finding one nearby, so I'm happy to, to second your proposal, councillor Morehead, on that basis.
I suspect a lot of people along there don't realise that there is a block TPO all along that bank.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I...
Okay, thank you, okay, so we have a proposal that we will accept the instruction, obviously with the proviso that the Timbridge tree officer will obviously use his discretion with this one, councillor Martin Heath, he wants to come in on this one, please do. You're on mute, Martin, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Carry on.
It's a trouble these Zooms, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just can't quite see, do they say, I've kind of looked for the, people looking at the trees, why they want to do this, is there a reason?
It is a tall sycamore, they don't have to give any suggestions.
Right.
Yes, they do, yes, they do, but again, that's...
Yeah, as pointed out earlier by councillor Val Morehead, that it can be just a regular thing, oh well, another tree, blom blom, and I do feel that although it is right for us to pass it over to him, if we're asked to comment on it, we shouldn't just keep passing over, if we think we've got comments, we'd hate our own little committee here to slip and not make any comments if we are asked to make comments, because that's what we're here for, otherwise we might as well sit, watch the television, so, if, if, well, being honest, I like to make interesting points, as you know, the point is, they're not giving any reason for doing it, so I would object to that.
Okay, okay. I have councillor Val Morehead and then councillor Wrigley, as, if you don't mind, councillor Morehead, as you've spoken first, I'll ask councillor Wrigley to speak next, please.
I think the clue, perhaps if I have this right, and forgive me if I've got the wrong trees, it's a sycamore, and aren't sycamores quite grubby trees, and this is over a parking area, and so I suspect they probably have a problem with the large tree leaving deposits on the cars that are parking under there, but I don't think that's a good enough reason.
I agree, councillor Wrigley, that's not a good enough reason, and I know the officers turned many down in the past, because neighbours have complained, there were cones and things dropping on the car, well, the tree was there first, in towns, if we were to follow that line, we wouldn't have many trees left, so I don't think we can go along with that.
Okay, councillor Heath, you've made your feelings known, councillor Morehead, if you'd like to come in, please.
I think I can clarify a little, it does seem to be towering over their garage, however, as was mentioned with something a little while ago, these trees were there before the estates were built, probably, and I know that there's been a loss of considerable number of trees along there, because people don't realise that they are protected, and people don't notice when they've been dealt with, they do acknowledge that the roots are holding the bank together, so they don't want to destroy it altogether, but bringing it down to three metres is turning it into a hedge, so I think all we, all, personally, all I could do is leave it to the judgement of Mark Waddams, who knows the difference between a tree and a shrub, and what is reasonable and what isn't, I'm sorry, that's the only thing I can say, he, he's the expert, he understands about the TPOs, in fact, I reminded him about the block TPO, which came in in the 1960s, not to do with this particular one, by the way, it was to do with something else, but quite recently.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead, did anyone else want to, councillor Morehead, councillor Wrigley, sorry, you were about to speak?
Yeah, so, so I'm not sure if we, not sure we've had a proposal on this yet, have we, so I, if, if we haven't, I'd like to propose that we, we reckon, we, we have an objection, but we pass it over to Mark Waddams to, for consideration, and the objection being that there is no good reason for taking this tree down to the size of a shrub.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Councillor Heath? Okay, thank you, councillor Heath, Yola?
Make sure that second screen that I put up did actually have reasons as to why they wanted to change the tree, and did have some measurements, I just want to check if everyone did read that, that it was clear up there.
Okay, because that was, that was, that was, do you want to put it back up again, just to make sure everyone's happy with that, because that was additional information, I don't think that was, all of that was on the actual website, and I'll come to you in a moment, councillor Morehead, we'll just have a quick look at this. Okay. So it's about the effect that it's having on the bank from, from that. The tree is rooted in the riverbank, which is not very stable, and a portion of this bank slid down last year. I think they do note as well that we wish to keep the tree as its roots help to stabilise the riverbank, they want to keep it alive, but it's the, the fact when it gets too heavy, it's actually overbalanced, well, not exactly overbalancing, but, yeah, a southwesterly wind can cause problems with it, I think that clarifies exactly what we need to know, thank you for that, Yola, is everyone happy with that, we'll go back to, to members, so you can, and councillor Morehead, you wanted to come in, if you'd like to speak?
Looking at the correspondence, they do make a correction, obviously they were communicating with Mark Waddams, and he had read their application as reducing it by three metres, they corrected him by saying they wanted to reduce it to three metres.
Three metres.
And we're talking about it falling on the substation, but I think he's the only one who can judge this, I'll just refer to his professional knowledge.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead, councillor Taylor, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, I, with, sycamores are a tree which, which proliferate, and it actually looks like an overgrown hedge to me, rather than a tree, I think what the, I think what the applicant is looking for is to reduce it to a size where it can be managed as a, as a large hedge, rather than a tree, and having to get more specialist people in to, to cut it, I would, I would rather flip the, the, what we have to say around to having no objection, other than if the tree officer was, was minded to refuse this application, thank you.
So is that a proposal, a counter-proposal, as it were, or an amendment?
It's a, it's a counter-proposal, because I'm not sure you can amend something so that it's completely the opposite of what it was in the first place.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, that's fine, so councillor Heath, come in.
Doesn't councillor Martin Wrigley have to redraw his proposal to do that, or do we vote on two at the same time?
It hasn't been seconded yet, as so far, councillor Heath, you can't, no, no, councillor Taylor's proposal hasn't been seconded.
No, I'm talking about the first one, the first one is, is being proposed by a councillor...
Councillor Wrigley.
And seconded.
And seconded by you.
So if, so if we have it, yeah, so if we have a new proposal, we'd have two on the table, so just a bit confusing, don't we have to either withdraw it or do it as an amendment?
Well, we haven't had a second for the, for that proposal, so as I understand, you're putting me in the pickle here, so...
I know, sorry about that, help me.
No, that's all right, no, that's all right, I will, I'll ask you, I'll ask Yola, as I understand it, we've got, we can't take it any further with a proposal and a second, we need to vote on that, and should that fail, then we, we come back to see any other proposals, and at the moment, we haven't got a, a second for that, Yola, are you comfortable with that, or are you going to correct me, I'm quite happy for you to do so.
As far as, as far as I'm aware, obviously the first proposal was set a second, but the second one hasn't as yet, so I think if it has, then it would be voting on the first and then the second, but obviously, because they're opposite, if councillor Wrigley's proposal was successful, that would negate the other one anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely, well, I think the best thing we can do at this stage, and apologies councillor Taylor, we don't have a second at this point, is to vote and see where members feel on the existing proposal, as we're getting, all are getting tied up in knots a little bit, can I ask councillor Wrigley to repeat the wording of his proposal, please, so Yola's clear and I'm clear?
Well, I'm not sure it's, it's still necessarily valid, having seen some of the extra details, which I didn't, didn't actually get through on that slide when it was up before, because we were concerned that they're wanting it to be reduced because of sap on the, on the cars parked underneath, which isn't often quoted, but their reasons of fallen branches and other bits and pieces may be, may be valid, however, I think I'm still going to stand with that proposal, because I think the reduction they're talking about is far more significant than, than one might expect for good management of a tree in that position, so I think the, I think I'd like to keep that proposal on the table, please, which is that we, we object on the, on the, on the basis that we don't see good reason for the tree to be reduced to that restrictive size.
To that extent.
To that extent, thank you, but clearly, but refer to the advice of the tree officer.
Okay, thank you, and there's been a bit of a, I think the meaning's the same, councillor Heath, are you happy to, to, to second on that basis, I know you already had seconded, but you're comfortable with that, okay, thank you, so we will vote on that first, and we'll see where that takes us, councillor Taylor, with your proposal, so members, would you like to vote on that, please? Okay, so that's carried, councillor Taylor, I'm sorry, you're lost and alone on that one, I'm afraid, so we won't be taking that any further, but we will be, as you did want to be, asking advice of the, of the tree officer with that one as well, so that is part of that one too. Okay, so that one's carried, councillor Taylor, please, you want to speak, go ahead.
Putting my hand up to abstain.
I beg your pardon, I didn't even give you a chance, thank you, thank you, Yola, if you can note that, please, and we will move on to the next item, apologies councillor Taylor, okay, so we come along to the last item tonight, which is 2001 283, and members might find this one a little bit familiar, we have seen this before, you're not going crazy, this is revised plans for 21 Westcliff Road, raising of the front gable, replacing existing lean-to roofs to the side with a flat roof, provision, provision of rear dormer and additional windows, so this is, Yola's struggling to find, find that item on her laptop at the moment, but we'll have a look at it in a moment, but it's on Westcliff Road in a higher position, and members, if I recall, objected to this when it previously came before us, Yola, if you would be good enough to find the wording of our objection at the time, I think that might be useful for members, just so they're, they're clear on that, please. So this is the property, yes, please, if that would be good, thank you.
So just so you're aware, obviously this was the last planning meeting, so the resolution unanimously was that, where the council recommends refusal of the application due to the proposed Juliet balcony that would overlook the neighbouring property and cause loss of privacy.
Yeah.
Number one on my email to Timbridge says, as requested, the Juliet balcony and associated glazing has been removed, I'm sure councillors have all seen the correspondence relating to this, obviously, as it was on the agenda.
Yeah.
This is the revised plan, obviously, so this is, this is the different one, really, that you need to be looking at.
Yeah, okay, if you recall, the balcony was actually going to be overlooking the property to the side and the garden of that, the neighbouring property as well, and that's what members, if I recall, were very concerned about. They do actually mention that they have shown the revised plans to the neighbour, and that there's no objections from them, on the website for Timbridge, there is still an objection from neighbours at number 19 Westcliff, so that's the other side, but that's the original objection that was in place when we actually looked at this bit previously, that's the only other objection that's on here. Okay. So councillor Martin Heath, if you'd like to come in?
Just a quick question, Timbridge councillors might know this one, on planning, has this actually been before the Timbridge, the original one, I mean, that we objected to, so did they withdraw it, is that what happened?
They withdrew to review the plan, as I understand it, is that right, Yola? Can't hear you, Yola, sorry, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that, as far as I'm aware, the decision hadn't been made, but obviously they've taken the advice and looked at the recommendations that have come through, and obviously did you get balcony as a bone of contention.
Right, so, so is that, so we're saying from that one, it was really only that balcony, if I remember, was there, or do we have any other objections?
It was a new window, if you recall, councillor Heath, on the side of the property, that overlooked the next door property at, well, that would be 23 Westcliff, and overlooked not only the side of the property and their window, but also their garden, you could see the garden from that one, because it's slightly higher, okay.
That, that's been changed now.
That's, the Juliet balcony has been removed, I've got other people who want to come in on this one now, councillor Heath, thank you, councillor Morehead, you were first, and then councillor Taylor.
Could I just clarify, thank you, Chair, I have looked at this, there is another objection, as you say, for number 19, the only objection that we made, it's in the minutes that are attached to this agenda, in fact, was to do with the Juliet balcony, and yes, the applicant has re, has withdrawn the actual balcony, however, the window, of course, is still there, and I'm just, would like to clarify where it says on the specifications and additional windows, are these, as in the original application, which you looked at in August, I'm sorry, I missed that meeting, or are there other windows that have now come into this revised application?
Okay, thank you for that, I must admit, I didn't notice any other windows, but I will stand corrected on that one. Sorry, council.
No, I just say there may not be, it's just my reading of the wording, I wasn't actually at that meeting, so I don't know the detail of the discussion, I'm just looking at the actual wording which says, and additional windows, I just wanted clarification that these, these additional windows were in the original application, and are not part of this revised application.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Taylor, you wanted to come in as well, please?
A similar, a similar thing, a similar comment to that of councillor Morehead, I'm not entirely sure about the side windows, whether there was, certainly the Juliet balcony was very prominent, as it was on the second floor in the new, in the loft conversion, and that would have, that would have been very noticeable facing, facing in the direction that it did, we now have an objection from, from the neighbour on the other side, so I would like to be reassured that this, this isn't the new window that we're talking about, a new to the revision, sorry, a new to the original proposal, or indeed new to the original plans, so if, if Yola could perhaps, please show us all three, and dwell, and dwell on them, because they do flick through quite quickly.
Okay, thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, please, Yola.
Thank you.
I just want to check that obviously everybody has read the email where they have listed the 1234 of the changes that they've made, that does obviously associate with the plan, and just so when you look at it, it obviously will draw attention to each thing that's changed, but I will share it now.
Okay, thank you. Can we go back to the previous screen? We kind of need to flick between the two if possible, if that's good.
So Chair, could we go to the original plans, please, first of all, and have a look at the windows to the side for each of the sides? So so there we have the two the two side elevations at the bottom of the page here.
This is existing.
As existing.
Yeah.
So there are windows to the ground floor, there are windows to the first floor, there are no windows to 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 the loft, as it were, to both sides of the house, albeit on one side, there are only very small windows. So if we could go to the revised plans, we could then compare those.
Yes, we've got all three there, we've got the proposed and then the proposed revised. So we've got all three to look at there from that point of view, to give us a lot of clarity.
So so from that point of view, the windows to the side are exactly the same as they were.
We've got the dormers.
Yeah.
We've got the dormers on the front and we've got the the lights in the on the rear.
It's a it's a
Oh, no, it's not a dormer, sorry.
It's a dormer to the back as well as to the front, isn't it?
Yes.
There are small, small dormers with the gables, gables on the front and a big square dormer on the back.
On the back, it's one dorm, yeah, certainly, yeah.
So so there would be limited views sideways, perhaps, across the garden, but I'll I'll say no more.
Okay, okay, thank you. It does definitely state that the they have had the okay, so to speak, not from obviously number 19, I guess, from that point of view, but it does say they have shown the new proposed plans revised to the neighbour that we suggested was being overlooked and they are comfortable with it. Obviously, we only have the say-so, so to speak, we haven't got we haven't got someone giving us a thumbs up from the neighbours, but we can only take that as it is. Could we look at the last one, please, Yola, just to check? I'm just conscious of the fact we've got, there we go, there's the proposed. So we had the, right, okay. So there is an adjustment in the there is an adjustment in the front dormers there, isn't there? They've they've put the dormers in from that point of view. Councillor Morehead, you wanted to speak, please go ahead.
Chair, I would just say that if there's no other change to the other windows, and if our only objection was to do with the Juliet balcony, and that has been withdrawn, we have no grounds to make any other kind of objections.
I agree. They have made another change, we've just noticed the the dormers, but I'm not I'm not seeing that as a personally, I'm not seeing that as much of a an issue, although we have to the the actual objection we have there from the another neighbour predates our meeting from that point of view. Can we look at the proposed revised plans now, Yola? And I have councillor Gary Taylor wanting to come back there, if that's okay. Thank you councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, you're absolutely right, the front elevation, although not brought to our attention, or perhaps brought to our attention, not brought to our attention wrongly, depending on the wording, but let's give it let's give the benefit of the doubt, it was just wasn't brought to our attention, was the fact that the dorm the dormers to the front are an addition to what was previously velux windows, as I recall.
Yeah, I think they were, I think they were.
But I can't say that they detract from the from the front of the building, which again seems rather rather devoid of windows, but so so to have a few more windows on the world at the front, I wouldn't wouldn't would have no objection to at all. And and yes, the Juliet balcony has been removed from the side. So from that point of view, I I can't I can't have an objection to this.
Okay. Are you happy to propose that we accept this as it is, councillor Taylor?
Yes, I would accept.
As you said.
I would propose that we accept it.
Okay. I think, Yola, you wanted to quickly come in, I can see Yola with her hand raised, that's an unusual one, carry on.
I don't have a blue hand, I'm very jealous of all of you.
Oh, you really need to have one, Yola, we will campaign.
Yes, if you can make me one, that would be great. But yes, just just on the note of the dormers, obviously on that email again, but a little bit further down, they do say you will notice that the front roof lights have been replaced with two number dormer windows. The addition of these windows has been discussed with the immediate neighbour who has expressed no concerns, just put that there for you.
Okay.
If I may, do we have the the wording of any objection from the neighbour? I'm not privy to it, I'm afraid.
Councillor, yeah, Yola, it was the one objection that was on the Teambridge website, I don't suppose it's
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't have that one, because I think that predated, obviously, what's gone before.
Yeah, it was from the 19th of August, which I made a note of that, but because it because it is before, from that point of view, it was a case of, oh, we've already looked at that. We also don't have any objections from from the point of view of the neighbours opposite, which is where the dormers would would come in from that point of view, because this property's higher than. Councillor Morehead, you wanted to to make a contribution, please speak.
I can't remember from looking at it earlier today. When we're talking about the front of the house, is that facing into Westcliff Road?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, because I could see otherwise, that the change from a dormer to a dormer from a roof light would mean there's much more visibility across other people's ground, but if it's only facing Westcliff Road, I don't see a problem.
That's right. There is a tree in front of them and there's the property in front on the other side of the road is lower down, but they've got quite a substantial couple of trees there as well from, I think they've put photographs in there as well. Councillor Wrigley, you wanted to contribute, please speak.
Yeah, I was just looking at the objection from 19.
Oh, thank you.
So
The joy of two computers, carry on.
Indeed, multiple screens. So they object to the planning application on being overlooked. They first of all object to the Juliet balcony, which will overlook them front and rear. The neighbouring property is on higher ground, which will impact badly on them. Intend to double the size of the landing window. Yeah, the proposed work in the attic space on the east side would result in a serious invasion of our privacy, also overlooking our gardens, both to the north and south, and lose our right squat enjoyment. Proposed dormer windows will have overbearing and intrusive element to us in the rear. With the flat roof, we fear this would be used as a sitting viewing area. So they are they are concerned with more than just the Juliet balcony, they were concerned with the dormers as well.
Yeah.
And it was all on the basis of overlooking and loss of privacy because of the different heights of the properties.
Yeah, even that's the neighbouring property, isn't it? That's not the one over the road, that's the property next door of the other side. Okay, this this objection does come from prior to this, and that was that was something we looked at when we had our previous meeting with this item. And I think it's what led to us objecting to the Juliet balcony, if memory serves, obviously I don't remember every word we speak in these in these meetings, as it were. We have a, well, we don't have a proposal, we have a proposal, but we don't have a second to actually take this any further. A member's minded that we're we're comfortable with the changes that the that the owner has is proposing with this now, or anyone else have anything else to say about this? Stony silence. I mean, I'm happy to, I think, I'll give you my my point of view, I feel that they have accommodated and made changes to the plan, they have also added the the dormer windows in there from from the point of view of the front, in the round and in the balance. I'm I would be happy to propose that we to second the proposal that's on the table, as I think it's is it is it is a balance as to what's reasonable and what's not. I take in the view of the neighbours at number 19, but I'm happy to second on on the basis, I think the changes are reasonable. There you go, I've shared my thoughts. Anyone else got anything else they'd like to say? No?
Well, I'm
That's the case.
Sorry, Chair.
Councillor Wrigley.
I I'm in two minds on this, because I'm still concerned of the overlooking and and loss of privacy for the neighbours. I'm not entirely sure that it will all have been removed and the the dormers instead of the, I think I would have been happier had they not put the new dormers into the plan. I think that worries me a little bit, because that does sort of also give overlooking aspects. But I do hear your hear your position about it, taking away the Juliet Juliet balcony and the the larger window there, so it's a tricky one for me.
Okay, okay, thanks for your thoughts. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering whether
And then councillor Heath.
There does there does seem to be a lot of silence around the table, I would I would hope there might be some some more some more speaking in favour. Perhaps it would be a good idea if this if this application was taken to committee by for the council to ask for this items to go to committee and see what Teambridge District Council's committee think think about it. I think it's very much in the balance as to the as to the overlooking issue. It is a large roof extension, no doubt about it. So it's a question of degree.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councillor Heath, you you wanted to come in, then councillor Morehead, thank you.
Yes, trying to add just a little bit, I totally agree with the last speaker there, it is a bit in the balance, and I would agree about the committee on it. I think they're built in the 50s. The style of the dormer, though, they're suggesting, seemed to be not quite 50s designs. I'm not quite sure how the actual design wise fits in either with the existing house or the road, which is all built roughly the same time apart, a few odds and ends in that road. And I still believe they're actually, correct me if I'm wrong, increasing the ridge line of the roof, does that mean they're actually going to raise the roof? I'm a bit confused with that, because if it's, or is it just the top of the dormers making it look taller?
They might be the dormers, I don't, as I understand it, the dormers are set into the roof, they're not going above the actual ridge line of the roof.
Right, sorry, I lost you a wee bit on the sound on that one, but I think you said it's not raising, yeah, you're
It's not raising above the, oh, sorry, the roof line is not going above the ridge line.
Okay, because it does say on that application that it is raising, it's a bit of confusion there. Yeah, it's think it definitely needs to go to committee, it's it's, I can't make a decision on this one.
Okay, councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that this is quite complicated. I think that we could ask for it to go to committee, but noting that we are pleased that the Juliet balcony has been removed, concerned that there is an addition of two dormers, and that we would refer the committee to the objections from number 19 for their consideration.
Okay.
As you were saying, councillor Wrigley and councillor Taylor, it, councillor Heath, it is quite complicated, this, it's not just removing what we objected to, it's nipping something else in, which may be complicating the problems as perceived by number 19. It's mix and match, it's a it's an odd one, isn't it?
Okay. Okay, Yola, I'm I'm not sure about dates, so are we going to be able to catch this one?
Yeah, I was just looking at that, because obviously, because we have our meetings every three weeks, obviously, with we normally aim that we submit our recommendations before the publicity expiry date, if it's slightly over, if the target date's quite off, it's still fine for us to to submit those recommendations, and it always has been. Something that came up recently was where an application was minded to go to committee, but the deadline or the publicity expiry was actually the day before the meeting. So in terms of the normal recommendation, it would have been fine, but because they're more stringent with the going to committee, technically I missed the recommendation, which is why you got more information coming through. Looking at this one, the publicity expiry is the 8th of the 9th. Obviously, again, you did do the recommendation previously on a lot of the same information and didn't ask for it to go to committee at that point. And again, just to reiterate, the refusal was due to the proposed Juliet balcony that would overlook the neighbouring property and cause loss of privacy. So with the dormers, that's obviously something different, but I think I would be probably would like to caution just to say, obviously, you don't want to really be going against what your committee has recommended at the very last meeting, based on all of the same information, bar the new dormers and the loss of the Juliet balcony, that's all I would say.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that that clarity. Councillor Morehead, you wanted to come back on that? If you'd like to speak.
Just clarifying that, really, because that's what we were saying a minute ago, wasn't it, between us? That's the consensus, really, was that we were pleased about the Juliet balcony, which is what the original objection was. But we do have the opportunity to say something else now, something different, because they've actually altered the application by putting these dormers in, and that is what's complicating matters and making it a more difficult thing to to come to a decision. Yeah, thank you, anyway, sorry.
Okay, well, obviously, the the objection that we've been talking about and councillor Wrigley clarified for us would have had no bearing on the the dormers, because at that point, they hadn't been submitted. So we've we have, and I believe, yeah, we have, we have no objection so far on the table from the point from the point of view about those dormers, apart from any that we discuss and determine ourselves here. Yeah, okay. Well, we do have a proposal and a second, I've seconded the proposal on the table, so I think if we take it to the vote, and if that's lost, then we will we'll see where we go with this. I'm minded that maybe maybe members are kind of conflicted with this one, but if we get the the vote out of the way, we can see our way forward from there, if that's okay. So the proposal was to accept the plan, and note the, I take your point councillor Morehead, and hopefully councillor Taylor would be happy to do the same, that the Juliet balcony has been removed from this plan, but we accept it as it as it is, as it stands, from that point of view. So we'll take a vote, so those who would like to vote in favour of that proposal, please. Those who would like to abstain. Those who would like to vote against. Okay, and it's three against three from that point of view. Well, Yola, we're definitely tied from that point of view, and I think that in a way shows the balance that we we stand from that point of view, but I guess as Chair, I have the casting vote, thank you. I think I'm going to use the balance word again, and I think it's it's, I'm minded to 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 accept the proposal, based on the fact that the the neighbours have seen the new plans and have not raised any objections, we have their word for that. I appreciate that we haven't got it in black and white, but I'm going to to air on that side from that point of view. So the proposal is carried. Okay, thank you. Councillor Tamlin, you're on mute, Carol, you're on mute. Thank you. Please go ahead. You're on mute again. So you've unmuted yourself, and there you go.
Yeah. Was the proposal made that we took it to committee?
We've just had it clarified by Yola that the dates that we needed to do that for, because of the way that it's structured, we've missed that deadline, so we're not able, we can recommend that. We can recommend that, I believe, but I believe that Yola clarified that we couldn't do that. Is that right, Yola? And I'll come to you next, councillor Taylor.
I think obviously you're able to recommend it, but the last one that we had literally, because it was one day over, they refused to consider it because we'd missed the deadline.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I appreciate that, okay, just wanted that clarity. And obviously, this was the date, was the 8th of September, we're sitting here on the 10th. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I think there might be some leeway on this as we are looking at revised plans for consideration. It would seem unreasonable if we're being asked to look at them again and yet, you know, we're not actually able to look at it in the way that we'd like it to be or respond in the way that we'd like it to be at this point. So I don't see any reason why we can't ask the question at least in view of the revised plans.
And try.
Yes, the dates there, I would imagine, are the original dates for the original plans, so...
I can't bring my email up in front of me because ordinarily, when you have revised plans, it will say within the 21 days, but unfortunately, that's in a different inbox that I can't access on my iPad. But the 21 days on the revised email might supersede that, but I'm not sure what day it was sent. Because again, the three week gap, it may well still be...
I think the best thing we can do is say that we will try and try to actually do that and say that the reasons, as councillor Taylor has mentioned. Councillor Moorhood, you wanted to come in as well, please, go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking that, to my mind, this comprises a new application because of the dormers. Our objection in August was to the Juliet balcony on the previous application and that's fine. That's been accepted and amended. But this application, they haven't asked for, what's the term now, variation. They have just put those in, those dormers are just in there under the same application. But to my mind, that's a different application.
So from...
I don't know how we deal with that, but I think on those grounds, we should be able to make a different request.
Well, I think that makes us, that gives us a strong case for asking for that to be called in to committee at Teambridge level. Yola, you wanted to chip in.
Yeah, obviously, they have labelled it as reconsultation just with regard to going to committee. Obviously, you have just voted that you accept it. So if it's going to committee, what would you be suggesting that it goes to committee? If they're advised to accept or refuse, because you voted to accept. So ordinarily, it would be the reverse, that if they were minded to refuse it.
Councillor Taylor, please untie this knot.
Okay, so let me get rid of that. We can ask for it to go to committee whether or not the officer wishes to approve the scheme.
So it can be discussed.
Normally, it is one or the other, but as we, as, other than with your casting vote, Chair, we are split evenly down the middle. I think that should be the right, it should go to committee, full stop.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
There is a closer inspection by a second committee, basically, is what you're sort of...
Yes.
Yeah.
You might have used your casting vote again, Chair.
Good grief. Councillor Martin Hay, thank you.
Just, you're just the sort of president, I think they call it. So I'm not looking at anyone when I do this because you're all on the screen, so I'm not poking anybody here. But I've always thought it interesting that the best way to vote on a casting vote is keep the status quo, I believe they call it, because it's not a majority, because then the Chair becomes a majority, which isn't a committed decision, although of course in law it is. But then that gives it a second chance to have a bash at. So I think we should pursue this because, yes, we have got a casting vote and we've made that decision, but it was against precedent, therefore it should go to another decision. I think that's a really bit of a picky legal thing, but I think that is a nice position to leave it, actually. Pass the baby.
Okay. Well, thank you for not pointing the finger there.
I wasn't looking at it.
No, that's fine. Councillor Moorhood, you wanted to come in and we just wind up with this one, if that's okay.
And I know I'm being a nuisance, but my point is, we agree to accept what's in here, that they, on the basis that they had removed the Juliet balcony in accordance with our objection. That is one thing that we've accepted. What we haven't done is approved this as a new application, which basically it is because it's not the same as the original. It's now got some additional dormer windows that were not in the original. To my mind, that indicates that this is either a variation or it is a new application and that gives us grounds to take it forward as a new application and therefore to ask...
And take it forward to committee.
With that reference to these additional dormer windows.
Okay. Yola, I think you've basically had it written for you when you go back over the recording of this. So thank you very much, members, for your thorough approach to this.
I don't know if you voted on it to go to committee. I know everybody's agreeing on it, but have you actually done the vote just...
We haven't, but I'm quite happy to put that to the vote and see if we do have everybody happy for it to go to committee. Okay. There we go.
Just for the record, Chair and class, as of the changes last week at Teambridge, I am no longer sitting on the Teambridge Planning Committee. Just because it does come up from time to time.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry about that, Martin, because I think you added a lot to the debates on the Planning Committee. So I hope the committee will carry on being a very good debating committee on planning matters.
I'm sure it will and I, like all other members, will go along and ask to speak on applications that I feel strongly about or that are in our patch here.
As of course we both did recently.
Indeed.
All three of us, actually, okay. That's fine. Okay, 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 members, I think we'll bring the meeting to a close on that point. Thank you very much for all of your input this evening. And that's all of the items, I believe, Yola, you're not going to correct me, I'm hoping. So thank you very much for your time and see you all soon, thank you.